Beginning the recording of the meeting, good evening. This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually pursuant to the governor's executive orders as extended on September 8th, 2020. Beginning with our regular agenda, the first item is Yaroslav and Alexandra Palilic for a preliminary subdivision at 89 Indian Field Road in the R12 Zone. Mr. Hegney, you are representing the client, if you would please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, good evening. Tom Hegney for the applicant. This is a parcel on the east side of Indian Field Road, just north of the railroad tracks that has been in the same configuration since the subdivision was done in 1909. It consists of 26,377 square-
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Hegney. Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Items not being heard this evening?
Yes, Mr. Hegney.
I was wondering if you would want-
Yes, yes. So, for anybody who is listening, the following items have been postponed. 11 Highgate LLC at 11 Highgate Road, which is item number two. Item number three, which is Jason Safriat and Victoria Lica at 33 Willamere Circle. Item number six, Terry Tatar for a final coastal site plan and special permit at Zero Oak Street West. In addition, the following regular members are absent tonight. Mr. Fox, Mr. Levy, and Mr. Hardman. Seated for them are Ms. Mr. Yesky, Ms. Goss, and Mr. Lowe. Now, you may proceed, my apologies, but at least I remembered to record the meeting. Go ahead.
Mr. Hegney, before you proceed. Madam Chairman, check the attendees. It looks like Peter Levy may be in the attendees list.
Oh, he said he wasn't coming. Okay, now, so we weren't expecting-
See you later.
Okay, so, Mr. LaRoe, could you just double-check who was originally seated for Levy?
Maybe disappeared from the attendee list.
That's because he's moving in. He's now on the panelists. That's what happened.
But this is, this is a new application, so he would be-
Well, he was absent. He would be seated, but I have to remove the alternate.
Yeah, so the order-
I'm sorry? Go ahead. Hardman was the first. You're the third alternate, Lowe? Lowe was the third alternate. So, Mr. Lowe is no longer seating, seated, and-
I will not be participating. I am just listening.
Oh, okay. He's back. Okay, he's back. Now, we're starting to sound like the RTM did last night. They were having this kind of confusion.
Then, in that case, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Levy should be in an attendee position and not on the panel.
Yeah, I'm doing it now, or you? I just did it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, okey-dokey with that. Once again, Mr. Hegney, take a deep breath and just start talking before we interrupt you again.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. So, we're proposing our two lots on the east side of Indian Field Road. They actually have frontage on Station Drive, which is a paper street, but also has a gravel road on it. We're proposing to have the 15% set aside as open space and as a conservation easement area to total the 15%. The driveway for both houses would be located. Where the driveway is located right now, the existing house, which had been on this property, has been removed. Each of the lots conforms to area, lot shape, and frontage. I know there was a question that came up on the Easterling Lot, whether it met the side yard setback. And since the conservation easement area is on the east side of that house, you measured to the open space parcel for the setback. And therefore, there's much more adequate than the 15 feet that is needed for the side yard setback on that side. We realized that with a common driveway, there will need to be an easement between the two property owners that will allow for them to maintain the driveway together and also for the utilities, including the sewer line, to be located within that area as well. We have reviewed the comments of the Engineering Division and will be in contact with the Deputy Commissioner on his request for an easement to put a sidewalk in along Indian Field Road. It would seem to work along Station Drive, taking it down to the station. So, there may be something of, that can be worked out. The sidewalk easement also has an impact potentially on the very large hickory, which is right along Indian Field Road. We're also looking at whether that impacts the sightlines for not only the proposed drive, but also for the existing drive, which is in the same place. So, we will be doing that as part of our preparation for the final subdivision plan. If you see fit to move us to final, we'll do a landscape plan as well as the drainage forms. I know as part of the discussion yesterday at the briefing, there was a question on, is there an area where you could have some type of buffer planting between the residential area and the railroad tracks? And there is a crescent-shaped parcel that my client actually owns, which runs along railroad tracks.
We didn't think, oh, I'm getting an echo. Pat, can you turn off the sound on your second computer?
I'm sorry, I missed that part. You said, what?
If Pat can bring up Slide 2 on the presentation.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna ask everybody to mute them.
To mute what?
He wants us to mute because we're trying to get rid of the second. We got rid of it.
Somebody has a second mic open and it's creating an echo situation, so.
No, it's gone now. So, did you turn off yours?
No, mine was not on. Both of my mics are off. All right, okay. Sorry, Mr. Hegney, you were asking for, would you bring up-
Show us the crescent-shaped piece of property.
So, in the bottom part of this survey-
Right, right here. Oh, yeah.
There is that crescent-shaped parcel that runs along Metro North.
Yeah, we thought that was not part of the-
It's not, it has not been submitted as part of the subdivision because it's on the other side of the paper street. It actually shows up even better on Slide 4.
Yeah. So, because Nick McRae asked that question yesterday about who owned that little piece of property land.
That's in my client's deed, actually.
Okay, so you can plant in there, that's a part of it. But really more important would be the line along the rear lot. Are you able to plant along the southern side of the rear lot?
You know, it not only benefits the whole neighborhood, which we're looking obviously to do, but also benefits these lots themselves.
Absolutely.
There's a very large hickory along the southerly side of the lot.
So, I made a note that you're gonna, you're gonna figure out, is there a way you can preserve that hickory?
I don't know. It had a very large limb that came down in one of the recent storms. So, we'll have to look. What we'll do is, we'll bring the landscape architect in and an arborist to look at the condition of these trees and determine what is able to be saved and what is not. For the most part, where we're showing the two houses is basically already clear because that's where the prior house was and the asphalt. So, there's a little bit of the asphalt that encroaches into the conservation easement area and the open space. And that, that will be removed and we'll have a planting plan for that.
Okay, so, saving the hickory and as much buffer planting as you can go in. You can get in. Okay.
And that's really it. I know you're all anxious to get home and have dinner, so I won't continue any further.
Okay, and you're gonna address all the DPW comments prior to your return?
Yes, I reviewed that with Mr. Ledman and his office is prepared to put all that.
Okay. Okay, and you're gonna, and you did comment on the conservation that when you come in with your next plan, you're gonna show the removal of the curb and the restoration of the open space?
Yes, that will be part of our landscape.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on this? I'm just going through it one more time.
Mr. Hegney, I think one of the discussions we had yesterday was actually who has ownership of Station Drive as a paper street?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Nick.
Because we're, it's interesting because actually everything we just said seems contrary to actually what's out there. Like that triangle, the triangle area that we were just talking about about being planted, it seems that actually the railroad may have kind of taken that over with a gravel path.
Yeah.
There is some there. There's also some that's within the area of the Paper Street Station Drive.
Yeah.
If you looked at the engineering comments, they seem to think that it's still in the original subdivider. And frankly, that's not uncommon to see, even in some of the well-developed neighborhoods, that the developer never conveyed it to the town, never conveyed it to any of the neighbors, so it's still there.
Now, Mr. Hegney, what that probably means, you've said in the idea the DPW had was that all the neighbors, all the residents of that subdivision have a right to that paper street as a result? That was what DPW put in their comments.
I'm not quite sure that's the case. It would be certainly needed if there was no other access to their property.
Yeah, but I'm thinking about the potential of putting a sidewalk in through there and who would have?
An idea.
Yeah, so what DPW's comments were is that all the residents who then subsequently bought lots in that subdivision would have the rights there. I suppose, I don't know how, if, my question is, would they, would the residents be able to cede that to the town?
No, because although they may have a right to it, they don't own it in title.
So, somebody would have to find Lawrence Timmons' heirs.
That would be an interesting project.
Well, because if DPW wanted to put in a sidewalk, DPW would not have the right unless they were granted the permission by the heirs. Is that correct, from a land use law point of view?
From a strictly legal standpoint, yes.
Okay, so.
And obviously, the town is not going to accept it as a public road because it's not paved. Just looking at my client's deed, it says, "Together with the right to use the streets, roads, and drives designated on that 1909 map." And I suspect that many of the other deeds in the, in the neighborhood have that in their title as well. So, the town could bring an action to quiet title, where it notifies anyone who might have an interest in it and publish it in the paper and then take ownership of it that way.
Okay. Well, we're gonna have to put that, we're gonna have to somehow figure out how to put that on the to-do list. It would be a good thing for all of Indian Field and Morningside to have access to the train station through there. I, I think we just need to leave it with DPW to resolve since that is, as I recall, that is the neighbors that, that there's a group of neighbors from somewhere in there that's been wanting to do that access.
I wouldn't disagree that it makes a lot of sense.
But there is issues, there are issues with it. Okay, all right, so that's not really your problem for the time being because your deed reads that your people have a right. Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't say, interestingly enough, that we have right, title, and interest to either the street or the center line of the street, which you do see in a lot of the older- which would give us ownership of it, but that's, that's not the case.
Yeah, it's kind of weird because Sachem Road and Osceola and Oh Stop Me, I don't remember where the subdivision goes on map.
It goes to Cross.
It goes to Cross. All of those are town roads, so at some point, that must have been seeded. The only one that wasn't seeded was the Paper Road. Final question, Mr. Hegney, and this does apply to your, to your property. The southernmost edge along Sachem, along Station Drive, east of Sachem, has some sort of easement or right-of-way, either EverSource or the, or Metro North, somebody is, I'm not seeing that, or am I missing it on your map? If you, if you want to toss your map back up.
No, I don't think we have that here. You may be talking about, there is a triangular piece that widens Indian Field Road and it has a note, just, the note's just at the bottom.
I'm thinking of the-
It's reported to be railroad property.
Okay, there's a weird, and it may just be over by the train station, but what I mentioned yesterday, is that a conversation with Jim Michael about two years ago when they fixed, they, they were working on Station Drive by this, on, between Sachem and the, and the station? And he told me there was some kind of right-of-way there, which we don't see in your map. I'm just asking.
That would have to go farther down to the east.
It was 10 feet in from the property boundary. Okay, if you don't have it on the deeds, then you're good.
That's not part of our title.
Okay, all right. It was a development, so it was a problem with his being able to install a guardrail? Where, his ability to move a guardrail? Okay. Okay.
We'll speak with Jim about the-
Just ask him if he knows, I mean, and I may be misremembering. Does anybody have any other questions? All right. Okay, is everybody, oh, thank you. Boy, I'm just keep forgetting that. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this application?
Please raise your hand virtually or if you're on the phone, star nine.
Okay, I guess not. Therefore, since there is no further public comment and the commission has no questions, does anybody disagree with closing this item at this time and making a decision on whether or not to move it to final? I see no, no disagreement, no handshaking. In that event, this item is closed. And Mr. McRae, could I please have a motion?
The application, United Indian Field Road, PLPZ 202212, preliminary subdivision in the R12 Zone. Applicants requested a division of 26,377 square foot property into two lots where Lot 1 and 2 would, residential parcel would be just over, just under 12,200 square feet each and providing an open space parcel of 2,000 square feet and conservation easement of 1,975 square feet. The commission finds that conservation issue comments dated 9/16/20 requesting additional vegetation be installed and the structures in the open space and conservation easements be removed. Zoning issued memo dated 9/16/20 stating the proposal meets the requirements of the Building Zone Regulations. DPW issued comments on 9/17/20 requesting resubmit prior to final subdivision to address outstanding concerns. Sewer Division issued comments dated 9/16/20 indicating no comments to be addressed during the PNC approval phase. And in the Wetlands Agency issued a permanent questionnaire dated 7/22 indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to move the application to final subdivision. The applicant is to address any outstanding staff-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, sorry. I couldn't unmute fast enough. The applicant is before returning? Are you gonna do that part? Okay, are you gonna do the part about before returning for final?
Therefore.
Okay.
Motion to move the application to final subdivision and the applicant is to address any outstanding staff or injured or environmental issues, which would be, as we just discussed, engineering, the tree replacement, the station place issue.
Or protection of the hickory.
Station place issues, removing of the structures, the DPW comments, which actually includes protection of the hickory and the sightlines. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
The applicant has, will return with a complete landscape plan, which will show buffer planting along the southern and southwestern portions of the proper, of the land owned in the sub, in this proposed subdivision and that covers the little triangle and that's it.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Do we need to mention the curb now or the concrete curb now?
He did, he mentioned the comments, he mentioned the comments by opens, by conservation that the structures would be removed.
Oh, the structure.
And the, and the plantings put in there, the vegetation that's required or requested.
Yep.
Sorry, obviously, you mentioned the sidewalk, right? I just missed it because I was-
It's actually, it's actually in the DPW comments.
The commission wants them to pursue?
But it's not really their deal. They don't own the land that the sidewalk, I mean, all we can do is note, on final, all we can do is note that there may be a sidewalk at some point. I don't see how else we would address it.
Well, just between, since it is a preliminary, I mean, you could ask the applicant to meet with DPW and see whether that's something of interest and what that would, you know, viable.
Okay, that's good, I like that. To me, the ideal thing would be to run, to run it through the middle of the, of the paper street. But, okay, so therefore, do I have a second for the motion?
I second.
Okay, Ms. Goss has seconded. Mr. Yesky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Goss?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone.
Bye, have a great trip.
I hope you have a very short meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Yes.
Here we go.
Okay.
This is the public hearing as well.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we've now determined that I forget all these things all the time. So, okay, we're now opening the public hearing. Our next application, first of all, Mr. Bristol, would you have any objection to us combining these two applications?
No, I was gonna request that actually, so please do.
That's great. 97 East Elm Street for a final site plan and special permit at 97 East Elm and 99 East Elm Street for a final site plan and special permit at 99 East Elm. And you're on.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Christopher Bristol, attorney for the applicant in both applications concerning 97 East Elm Street and 99 East Elm Street. For purposes of discussion, as pointed out, we're combining these two applications and talking about the project in total. We are on the north side of East Elm Street with two adjacent properties. On the map, it's Lot 7 and Lot 8. Lot 7 would be 97 East Elm Street and Lot 8 would be 99. The lots were previously, were most recently used for single-family purposes. Now, those buildings have been demolished. I believe both those lots are vacant. The proposal is to develop each lot with one, two-family building each. As you'll see on the plans, both lots are supposed to have, again, one, two-family building each with one garage space per unit and a shared carport structure with one carport space for each unit. The proposal is to access both properties by way of a single shared driveway that spans the common boundary line between the two. And because there's a shared driveway and cross-easements needed between the two properties, that brings us into special permit territory. The buildings, developments could be complying with zoning regulations. I know that the zoning enforcement officer questioned the deck encroachments and obviously will correct that, so that will be fixed. But other than that small point, everything is compliant with the Building Zone Regulations. The threshold issues, it seems to me, are the engineering comments, which we talked a little bit, which you talked a little bit about in your briefing yesterday. And I'll just sort of touch on those. The first is sightlines coming out of the shared driveway, the one serving both the, the center, serving both the buildings. We have engaged Michelante to take a look at, to do a study and prepare a report to see if the quality of those sightlines to see and to present that to DPW. So, that's, we're waiting for the data. I believe he's unplugged the data, he has to do an analysis and then talk to us about it and present it.
Okay, good.
So, that's forthcoming. Now, the shared driveway on the 90, on Lot 7 on 97 East Elm Street, the shared driveway on the west side that's shared with 93, the adjacent property already at 93. That is, we had not proposed to use that. It's, we do have the rights to use that as part of that property, primarily used by the 93 property owner. We didn't have, again, we didn't have any intention to use it as part of this development. We're going to leave it as is. We, at least up until now, we had some discussions with the neighbor, which I'll touch on in just a few minutes. But if, my thought was, if we were going to retain the right, even though we don't use it, we will jointly maintain it. And obviously, if we abandon the right and give it up entirely so that it's only used by the next-door neighbor, then the maintenance will go away, so.
What? I'm sorry, I didn't understand. What did you say?
I was just saying that, that the maintenance, up until now, I had envisioned the maintenance obligations to go, to run with the right to use that shared driveway to, on the top, the one on the, the one on the, on the west.
Sure.
We don't, we don't, we had no intention to use it as part of this development, but without having, without thinking it any further, I had originally envisioned retaining the right to use it, although we had chosen not to. And if we kept, I know, I know that's what, that's another engineering comment which we're talking about as well, which I was going for, I was getting to. To touch on that topic from DPW, DPW wants us to abandon the right to use that shared driveway on the west along with 93, which I think is where we're headed anyway, but because that, I guess that is, because it's a title matter, it's a little bit dependent upon the discussion with the neighbor about how to work it out, you know, how to work out the title aspect of it. But we're agreeable to not using, to foregoing use of that driveway.
So, my take on why they want you to abandon that is because of the lack of distance between the two driveways as well as the fact that that one, the first one, the 93-97, has an inadequate sightline. And so, what they want to do is, if you will, they don't talk like this, but reduce the non-conformity.
Well, we, we were looking at the sightline in the main driveway.
Yes, but I believe that they also make a comment about, unless I'm wrong, but I thought they also made a comment about the sightline on the, on that, on the one that they're sharing, that they're sharing right now.
I mean, the, oh, the, the one up on the, with the adjacent property that's not part of the-
Yeah, I, did I misunderstand that?
I didn't, well, we're not, we're not changing it anyway, so I mean, I don't know what we would do with it.
Right, well, you're reducing the non-conformity by taking volume off of it.
Yeah, 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 certainly.
Okay, so by, and that means that you really should, and from what I understood from Marissa and DPW, you would have to do some sort of documentation that you're abandoning that use.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, but I also, I guess there, there's an insular and related topic there, when you talk about separation of driveway, separation of driveway entrances.
Right.
And I had come on that, the, the, the DPW prohibition is that you can't have, you have to have fifty-foot, fifty-feet separating driveway curb cuts on your own property. And because we have, if you look at ninety, well, if you look at the lots there, there's a shared driveway between ninety-three and ninety-five, or ninety, ninety-five and ninety-seven, right, which, which is technically on the ninety-seven property. And there's a curb cut that's adjacent to that also on ninety-three, so that's the only reason. Generally speaking, they don't want you to.
Yeah, I got it. So they don't want, they don't want, ninety-seven can't be in that driveway because that breaks the DPW fifty-foot rule. We got it.
Yeah, I was, I was going to compare that with, I mean, if you go by that rule, I know this is also allowed, that we're also, you would be allowed to have your individual driveway on each property, so.
Right.
I guess where I, where I was going for, I was taking those issues separately. I was looking at the prohibition about using ninety-three as something different, not the separation. So I was going, I was being prepared to argue that the net effect of what we're doing, despite that fifty-foot distance of separation requirement, is in that effect, it's only one, two curb cuts for these three properties versus three that would otherwise be allowed. So I was looking at that engineering rule, you know, I, I was, I was playing with that. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't look at the, like I said, sightlines issue with, with the ninety-three hundred.
I think that where they're.
Sorry, I'm getting a headache. Is it listening because there's so much static when you're speaking? Is there anything we can do? Can you move it?
No, I don't have static.
I'm hearing it, am I the only one?
Yes.
Breaking up.
Yeah, I don't hear it either. I don't hear any static.
Okay, maybe it's me, then, okay.
Victoria, do you have a pair of earphones?
Uh, not handy.
Okay. All right, we'll just tell Bristol to stop talking. Is the rest of us static as well?
No, no, I think that the driveway is quite.
No, no static here.
All right, Mr. Bristol, the solution given to you by DPW is pretty straightforward. Draft a legal document to remove all rights to use the existing driveway. Now you do, I believe we're going to have a neighbor speak on this topic, so why don't we wait to resolve it? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, but I mean, I was, I was going to go and touch on some other things and then I was going to actually touch on the things that I talked about with the neighbor.
So you're redesigning it basically then to have it share the other one, or no?
No. No, we're, we're, we're going to keep, we were going to keep everything as is, just, I, I guess the discussion is to give up the right to use the one shared with ninety-three.
Then they're going to share ninety-seven and ninety-nine.
Correct.
Ninety-nine, ninety-seven and ninety-nine are going to share.
Right.
Okay.
So the one inside of the development is, is going to be the primary one for this development. And although we had the right to use the other one, and we had, and we had not intended to use it, DPW wants us to forego it entirely.
And to give up the non-conforming, even though they don't speak like that, that's the gist of it. Translatable to our language.
If, if you give up the right to use it, if you abandon the use, do you still have to contribute to the maintenance of the common driveway?
Well, I'd argue no. I mean, I, I would, I would assume not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree to maintain something that we don't have a right to use. And that's what I said, and that would be the, the part of the discussion that has to happen with the neighbor individually versus.
Exactly. So let's go to the carport real fast.
Carport.
I went back and forth with Jody and Marissa today, and they don't, DPW doesn't want you to be able to get to the carport from the ninety-three driveway. Six-five very clearly says that only the inner walls can be walls. Jody came back and said, your concept of a lattice was okay if you wanted to do that, but that the lattice had more than fifty percent, has to be more than fifty percent open. And my problem with that is that then the lattice gets bad and it falls down and blah, blah, blah. I realize it could look very pretty, but an eighteen-inch knee wall would be practically invisible from the street and is actually what six-five says. And, you know, you're pouring concrete anyway, when you do the foundation, you might as well just add an eighteen-inch knee wall. I think that Nick commented yesterday that he didn't think it was particularly aesthetic, but I feel like the lattice could go away and there'd be a problem. And you're maintaining, you've got maintenance that you wouldn't need to have with a knee wall, so I would lean to the knee wall. But I don't think I may, I have consensus necessarily here, Nick.
I was also going to, I, I just, I'm sorry, I just want to interject and add, we also proposed a lattice as well as the planted area there, you know, with our provider or whatever.
Do that, you can do that, but, you know.
For screening, I thought the whole point was to, was to help, to be, coming to the neighbor to, to help screen lights and stuff, so the lattice and the planting would help much better. That's where I'm going with it.
I just think the lattice could suddenly be gone, but if you did a screening and you showed us some sort of plan where you've got the screening shown, um, all the additional screening, Nick, are you good with that? I, I'm a little.
I think, I think, I think the lattice can be done, I think it could be done to, to fit into the building. I think actually having the knee wall would actually just create a situation where he looks like you've got a, you got a hole of the, a hole of the building.
It's eighteen inches, you don't see it.
Yeah, that's the thing, you don't see it. So then the cars are parked there.
Okay.
I think the lattice actually, actually adds, adds the screening.
I also thought it would be helpful for plants too. I mean, if, you know, for whatever reason, they wanted to do something that climbed a lot, I don't know. I don't know, you know, so I just thought it would be.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, but it, we're just going to specify to you that per the CEO, it has to be more than fifty percent open and that would be a condition. Okay.
Yes, and, just, I have been having discussions with, I think Chip Hasland's representing the neighbor now. I don't know if Chip's on.
I'm not seeing Mr. Hasland. So, let's just get through all the comments that the commission has and then we'll go to the public.
Oh, okay, just, the only thing I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, was just, just to, in, in terms of that neighbor on the, on the, on the west side, we also, or there, there's a fence now along the driveway, so we had anticipated maintaining that fence along that side as well as adding some plantings, as you can see in the, in the landscape plan, in the development plan. So in terms of screening for the neighbor, we are sensitive to that, so, and we're going to maintain that fence. So I just wanted to make that clear so that you're, you're understanding that we're trying to work with the neighbor and be, you know, and be, and be good.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Bristol, just, just to understand, so the driveway is being given up, the use of the driveway is being given up, the driveway will stay as is. Is any part of that driveway, part of your, your coverage, or excuse me, green space calculation or anything like that?
Oh, yeah.
That's all, it's all been accounted for?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay, and you're going to do, you're going to, you're going to do something with a number of trees? I did around site, oh, you did do that and I had trouble reading it, that was what the problem was. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I had, I had submitted it to the plan and I, I did it to that too, and my, my version was crashing, so I'm not, hopefully it came out and you're, and you're able to see it.
We couldn't, I know, I didn't figure out that that was what you were doing, okay. Okay.
I mean, that's, that's really the, I, I saw the engineering issues as the bigger things, so I wanted to spend some time on those, but.
You would be correct, you would be correct. Anybody else in the commission have questions on these two applications? Okay, with that, I'm going to turn to public comment with the person, and Andrea Semenok. I am promoting you to panelist. And you should be able to speak now if you want to give it a shot. Hello? All right, let me just, and, yeah, you should be good, try your sound. Yeah, you're muted.
I don't know, maybe your microphone is not on.
I just get, don't have the mute buttons shown, so.
Ms. Semenok, could you try turning on your microphone?
Or testing it is really what you should be doing, down in the, the corner there, making sure that the microphone, you're using this, the test speaker and microphone.
Otherwise, we, you might want to use the phone to just call into the meeting.
Patrick, do you have the?
Oh, maybe there's another Semenok, Andrea?
No, no.
Someone else has their hand up, I'm wondering if they're in the same house.
Okay, well, let's see what happens. I hope they're related because it's not a very common last name. Okay, this person was muted.
Are we on?
We're good, we're good.
Hey.
Nice job.
I guess my husband's laptop works better than mine.
Sorry about that, Madam Chairwoman.
Oh, that's okay, it's good that you're both on one laptop anyway because it's a little awkward.
Okay, so my name's Andrea Semenok and my husband Chris and I co-own ninety-three East Elm. And, well, I, um, obviously, we think the property is, is, is too close to the driveway, but before we sort of get into the meat of that, in, in looking through the application, I found three different versions of the structure that's going to be placed on ninety-seven. So there's one version on the development plan. There's a different version on the site distance plan. And then there's another version on the landscape plan, so I'm really not sure which plan we should really be addressing.
Nick, do you?
I think we can ask that question, the applicant, if the, you know, it's possible that the site distance plan doesn't reflect the current development plans because they're not drawn at the same time, but the short answer would be the newest plan is the plan that, that was being considered. So if there's discrepancies with the building regarding the site distances, it only matters to the areas that are impacted by that site distance. It, it's not a plan that would be approved to be developed in alternative to the site plan.
Okay, so I'm going to go with the development plan.
That's a good idea.
Okay, so, and we're only talking about ninety-seven since that's the only one that impacts us.
Yep.
So the rear house, the, the wall of the rear house is twenty-four inches off the edge of the driveway. With the eaves and the gutter.
Wait a minute.
It pretty much overhangs the driveway.
The wall of the rear house is twenty-four now, I'm looking at this. Patrick, can you put that up so we're all looking at it? Now I'm looking at ninety-seven.
Yeah.
And it says that the side yard setback is seven feet on one side and eight feet on the other.
Right, and of the seven, five is paved, is the driveway.
Ah, I, no.
So that leaves two feet of dirt between the driveway and the structure. And that's not even including, you know, the eaves and the gutter. As you go towards the front of the property, it gets a little wider, but maybe three feet at most.
Yep, seeing that, okay.
So my, my, we have a couple of issues. One is the, the, you know, the overhang and the snow that's going to be dumped onto the driveway and the fact that there's no place, should we decide to maintain it ourselves? There's no place for us to put their snow in addition to our snow. So that's one issue. And the other issue is, if you look at the, if you look at the, the grades, okay, the grade of the driveway is at one sixteen and the grade of the house, the first floor is at one thirteen. So the first floor is going to be dug into the ground and will start three feet below our driveway.
Yes, as I remember, they're doing three, I can't remember how much fill, how much cut that is, but they're doing cut and no fill. They're removing dirt, I remember seeing that, yes?
So the, so the, are you saying that the grade of the twenty-four inches is going to be at one thirteen or one twelve?
I'm looking for it, hold on a second. Nick, do you have that? I can't.
Which, which area are you, you're speaking of right now? I'm sorry.
We're always talking about the sliver between the driveway and that, and the structure.
Twenty-four inches.
But specifically, where is the elevation that you just?
Oh, I'm, I'm on, on page twenty.
One thirteen is the existing elevation.
Plan.
Okay, one thirteen is.
No, one thirteen is their first floor. One twelve is the existing elevation and the driveway is at one sixteen in the rear.
Um, one thirteen on that, on that plan, Nick, I'm looking at.
I'm looking at it here.
I'm looking at the sediment plan and it shows one thirteen as the existing.
Right at the, you're right at the middle of the driveway and then it rises to one sixteen at the end of the existing driveway.
Right.
The house stays at one thirteen.
Exactly. So if you look at where it's marked, there's a little bit of difference, there's one thirteen point eight is your existing elevation in the side yard and one twelve point five. Oh, there's actually, so you'll see that below the house, there's an elevation of a hundred and thirteen point seven and the house is at a hundred and twelve point five.
We're talking about the rear house?
Right, the rear.
Talking about the one, yeah, we're talking about the ninety-seven, yeah, exactly.
So the, the first floor of the house at one thirteen is three feet lower than the driveway.
No. Oh, than the driveway, but it's the existing grade.
No, their proposed garage, if you look at their proposed garage, that's on, that's on the, that's their grade at one twelve. Right, then the first floor is at one thirteen and the exist, the shared driveway is at one sixteen. So how do we get from one thirteen to one sixteen in the twenty-four inches?
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing this one sixteen elevation everyone's referring to.
Okay, so.
It's at the, at the way end, the.
There's a one sixteen by the seven foot, by the seven-foot call of the setback.
Yes, so if you go.
If you want to go to the grade plan, that's page twenty-seven.
Okay, here, oh, I can't use an arrow on your thing, but if you.
Patrick, scroll up a little bit in the, on the page, towards the existing driveway.
The rear corner of the building.
Okay, stop right there, right in the middle of the page is a dimension of seven feet, do you see that?
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, can you pinch into that?
Yes, so that, that is the, that is the existing grade right now is one sixteen and they're, they're calling a spot elevation here that, that the edge of this wall or whatever this, this structure is right here will remain at one sixteen. And then everything below it is, is. One twelve, so they're, what, it's called a cut, so that they're holding the grade up as it exists and they're creating a lower grade at the bottom of the wall that they're building on the inside of the lot.
Okay.
Right, so we have a retaining wall.
I'm talking about from the, from the rear house towards the, the carport.
Right.
There's no retaining wall on the, on the plan, there's only a retaining wall, you know, for the grassy area.
Okay.
So what happens in between the driveway and the house?
That's a very good question, I think actually that's something that the engineers should be addressing.
And also.
It could be, it could be actually, and I can't tell, it could be actually the foundation of the, the house.
Well, how do you work that at the carport? See, the carport's at one twelve and the driveway is at one fourteen, so you have a wall.
There's only about a, you know, an eight to twelve inch difference between the property line where the carport is proposed right now, so it, it could be, it could be being addressed with that knee wall idea or it's, it still needs to be finalized out, but. I'm where you go. It's not.
So you're going to address that, I think, Mrs. Semenok, that is an excellent question because they do need to address how they're going to handle that and they didn't call it out here. I'm not seeing it anyway. I see, I see your point about the, I see your point about the change.
Okay.
I saw that they were doing cut and I just didn't look for walls. That may mean that my whole carport discussion gets resolved and that they're going to have to do a knee wall on that carport anyway.
Yes, and also it sort of eliminates the ability for planting.
Right.
Right. So there you go, Mr. Bristol, you're going to figure out how to screen that. And I apologize because I meant to walk this today and I did not, but I will definitely walk it before the return.
Okay, and then, what do we do with the thousand feet of snow plus the, however? what do we do with the thousand feet of snow plus the, however, another thousand plus feet of snow that falls from their roof onto that driveway? When we built our house, we planned, you know, locations to stockpile snow. But we didn't plan to stockpile their side and their entire roofline.
And where do you stockpile yours now, Mrs. Semenoch?
Uh, well, we will do it in front of our detached garage.
Yeah, I wish.
But that's a, that's a lot of load for us to take.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're talking about actually snow that's actually going to slide off the roof onto the driveway. That's what we're talking about.
We're talking about the, the, you know, it's five feet wide by 200 feet long. So there's the snow that falls on it plus the snow that falls off the 120-foot length of roof.
Okay, I think, uh, if we're having enough snow on a roof that actually it's falling off into the driveway, we're probably won't, should be worried about something else because it probably would be on the roof and melting into the gutters and things. Uh, but you have a valid point there.
She does.
And, uh, so, so now you kind of, you just plowed into the back, the backyard on your property.
Well, yeah, we put it in front of our garage because we have a, yeah, we have access. It doesn't, it doesn't impede our, our, our access.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Well, what about if we give, I mean, if we're giving up the right to use this, I mean, as contemplated by TPW and, um, uh, I apologize to the neighbor, um, uh, the Semenochs, if, if they take over maintenance of it, then.
Oh, no, Mr. Bristol, you can't, you can't put water on other people's property and snow is water.
They have the exclusive right to use easement. I mean, if they have a possessor interest in, in.
You still can't, you still can't dump your storm on somebody else's.
Primarily, Madam Chair, it's a maintenance issue about who's going to maintain what in that easement area, even though it's owned, um, you know, it's, it spans both properties because that's, that's at issue here, you know, it's, um, I, 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 I understand what you're saying about water, but, uh, when you're talking about snow, um, you know, or that type of, of item, where, where is that, who's, who's?
Same concept.
What's half, you know?
It's, it's in every maintenance, every maintenance discussion includes the same thing. The right, it literally is the only thing, snow plowing and, and road maintenance. It's.
Yeah, but it's still the concept, uh, Mr. Leroux, it's still going to be the same concept, um, that Mrs. Semenoch is raising. Um, here's my thought on that. This is a, this is an issue that DPW should look at because in, in my mind, this goes to the storm manual. Uh, because as Pat said, you could have melt issues. You would have, the snow would be coming down in a melt situation and I think you need to address it with DPW and.
Right, but if it's, no is melting, it's melting on the roof, it goes into the gutters.
Right.
And the gutters, take the, the gutters take that away. That's part of the drainage manager already. Where do all those leaders and gutters go to and how is that water affected? It's not rain, it's not snow, it's rain. It's the water that's melted.
The way it rains these days, the gutters don't even catch most of the rain. We have torrential rains and they, and it flies over the gutters. So, you know, maybe on paper that sounds right and works, but the real, the real world is that we're going to get a whole ton of rain and snow on the driveway. And right now, it might even pitch and, and like end up in our, our basement.
Well, I, I, I just want to point out that, um, the whole site now drains in that direction. When this, if this is approved, what's going to happen is the roof may be draining in that direction, but the land itself is going to be draining the other direction.
Yes, and the roof.
We're supplying a heck of a lot of drainage information. We have to comply with all the drainage standards. And Tony DeAndrea is doing a very fine job like he always does in designing his drainage system. I don't, well, everyone's developed the exact same way. If you look in here, there, there's buildings in the same development all over.
I think we'll, we'll, we'll save the response for the after. We'll let one party talk and then the other.
Also, um, Mr. DeAndrea.
More controlled.
Good evening.
Hello, um, I just brought Mr. DeAndrea up so he can address his drainage plan. I was just switching to it to look at it. Um, Mr. DeAndrea, you want to go ahead?
Yes, please. I would like to offer comments relative to the control of stormwater runoff. First of all, if you look closely, and I, um, apologize if you can't all read it on the scale that we provide, but we have roof leaders showing along the western side of the dwelling and that's intended to, um, intercept all of those, um, all the runoff from the roof of the, um, western side of that building. And you'll notice that it's carried through to the middle of the two buildings to control it in accordance with our, um, drainage manual. Also of note is that the, the, um, carport elevation of 112.5 does have the one, um, 1.5 foot or 18-inch high knee wall. That's built into the plan, obviously, to keep the, uh, cars from exiting out the back. Uh, that's permitted, um, and limited by our zoning regulations. So when you add the 1.5-foot high knee wall to the 1.12, 112.5, that gives you 114 and that actually matches the grade of the driveway on the western side of the carport. In the northwest corner, we have proposed to have a retaining wall to accommodate the difference in elevation between the existing grades on the Semenoch property in that location. As, um, uh, Chris pointed out, the driveway that's used by the Semenochs at 93 is, um, five feet onto, uh, the property of 97. We can't do anything about that. And therefore, the architect has carefully designed the buildings to address that. Uh, Ms. Semenoch is pointing out that, um, there is two and a half feet from the edge of the building to the edge of their driveway, which has always existed. But as I point out, we've intercepted all the water from the roof in our gutters and carried it easterly for control. So that's, that's the essence of, um, the, uh, the design, matching the existing contours and elevations on the adjacent property. Keep in mind, the Semenoch property was developed first. Um, therefore, we had no choice but to accommodate the grades that were established on that property and we followed that carefully, which resulted in the need for the retaining wall in that northwest corner.
So I do have a question though, on the setback. If you have the side setback that goes to the Semenochs.
Goes to the, goes to the property line.
It goes to the property line. So the property line, am I understanding you correctly that the shared driveway is, is that the, that the shared driveway is within that?
Yes.
Yes.
What it is, it's a five-foot.
So hold on, Mr., so hold on, Mr. DeAndrea. How do you then give up your rights to the 93, 97 driveway if you need that driveway to meet your setback requirements?
Okay, first of all, yeah, first of all, Chris will tell you as the attorney that we're not giving up the rights to land, we're giving up the rights to use. First of all, I would never give up any easement if I were in control, but I'm not the.
No, you're not in control. We, we took it away from you, so go ahead. So your point is they will.
Is we own the land, we own the land to the drive, to the center line of the driveway, basically, where the easement for ingress and egress is, um, staggered on either side by five feet. So a 10-foot wide easement, five feet on Semenoch, five feet on 97. But we're not giving up any land. We have, however, accommodated or, or accounted for the impervious area on 97 in the computations for green area.
All right.
That's why you see a lesser green area on 97 than on 99.
Now, let me ask you, I'm going to switch topics real fast on you. I'm going to go back to the snow thing. I'm looking at the roof lines on your proposed development. And as I see it, the bulk of your roof line does not bring snow slide into the driveway because your roof lines go the other direction, mainly in the other direction. Is that correct or not?
If you look at the cross-sections of the architect's, um.
You know, make it easy, make it easy for me and go to, there we go, to this one, A001.
There you go. So you'll see that he has an east or west across the front portions of the building. That sheds the snow, um, in this case, north and south.
Right.
And therefore, we are able to pick it up and carry it into the middle.
Now.
In addition, on those little roofs that do, that do pitch on the gable and those gutters to, um, pick up that water.
Gutters, or can you put the thing, you know, the sliding, you know what, um, oh, I just blanked on.
Snow stop.
Snow stop, thank you. So you could.
Worried about sliding.
Okay, she's worried about the sliding thing. You could put snow stops on the small roofs and then your big roofs will divert, will divert onto your own property. That's the simplest, will slide onto your own property. That's the simplest solution.
Right.
Okay.
We agree, we can.
So, and this whole discussion with the lattice and all of that is pretty irrelevant because you need that knee wall in the carport anyway.
What we, what we propose to do, I believe, is to, with respect for the neighbor, is to do something to shield the lights. So Chris DeDarrow, the architect, had been discussing that with the neighbors. And, um, that's how you came about having landscaping along the, the western side of the carport.
And you've got the two feet.
We can't have a solid wall there.
Okay, and you've got enough space there to put evergreen screening?
Right, that was the plan.
Okay.
No, in, in two feet?
Yes.
That's enough to put evergreen screening?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chairman, if I may also note that the photographs that were presented at some point along the line also indicate that there's a, a fence, that the Semenochs installed a fence.
We didn't, we didn't install a fence. That's your fence.
Let's make, let's say that it was repaired and replaced in kind where it had originally existed. But there is a fence six feet high that separates the properties on the eastern side of the stone gutter that was constructed by the Semenochs.
It was not. That is the Mangasarian's fence. That is Ted Mangasarian's fence that was there originally. That is not our fence.
Okay, okay, so it, it doesn't matter whose fence it is right now, Mr. DeAndrea, if you would just go to the point on that?
Well, the point is that there's a shielding already along the side of the portions of that fence were repaired. You can see it, look at it. But regardless, our property, and that's part of the screening to protect the lights from the carport from ever trespassing 93.
How about the noise from the gravel?
Um, can I, can I just ask, just for the purpose of the record, can, um, you know, Madam Chair just asked, uh, the, Mr., the engineer to answer a question. And I know, Miss Semenoch, you, it was your turn speaking, but it just does complicate the record when it's a back and forth like that. Um, so if we could just, Madam Chair, run it and direct people as to when to speak. I'm sorry, it would just make it so much easier. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. DeAndrea, um, could you, um, Pat, could you bring us to A002? Okay, to the bottom half of A002. I'm sorry, the middle section of A002. Come up some.
This is three, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, you said two?
I'm looking at A002, yes. Okay, so you're going to have to do the, the snow, the snow stops along that all over the garage as well because you've got the, the roof, you've got the same direction roof line there. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, now, back to, um, what was your point, Mr. DeAndrea? Forget who owns the fence right now. What was your point about the fence?
The point of the fence was that in the, within the construction or subsequent to 93, my observations were that the fence was repaired, replaced in portions. And therefore, it exists and we're willing to leave it. And it provides screening and protection against from any vehicle entering the carport. Zoning prohibits the wall along the backside of that carport, the western side.
Yes, we've had that.
More than 18 inches high.
Yes, I've had that discussion with everybody per six, five, it's prohibited. Okay.
On the landscape plan, Mr. DeDarrow prepared, he shows bushes on the western side opposite the carport. Okay, that was the purpose of demonstrating the willingness and ability to landscape to protect the, uh, residents of 93 from any trespass lights from the cars entering the carport.
All right. Okay, um, I think that, but when you guys come back, um, let's resolve that fence issue and how you do the screening and give us the opportunity to walk it. I'd like to have the opportunity to just walk it and look at the existing, which I normally would have done and I just got, I didn't get there. Um, and I would be good, I, it sounds to me, since nobody's jumping in, that I may not be alone in that. So if we, if we could just, and then we could settle it. Um, okay, Mr. DeAndrea, is that all of your response now to all of the points that have been raised?
Not quite. I had one more. I, I heard, even though it wasn't directly addressed to me, the question was raised, I thought I heard something about what are you doing about the gravel driveway?
Yes, sir, if you would answer that question.
I'm not aware of any gravel. What we do have is a permeable pavement.
Right.
And that's designed to, in the courtyard, and we listed that as porous asphalt in the middle of the buildings opposite the carports to provide for access to the garage. We wanted a stable surface. That permeable pavement or asphalt could ultimately brick pavers or something, but it's intended to be permeable to infiltrate in accordance with our drainage manual. And that's, um, um, part of the plan at this point.
Okay. So you're, sorry, um, Nick, would you go ahead?
Yeah, the, uh, the gravel came out of, uh, uh, the architectural plans. Uh, it's shown on drawing A1, A111. Um, it's got a little bit more detail. I think this is where the confusion may be as to actually what's happening in the, in the carport. Um, it shows the carport. It doesn't show a knee wall on the backside, which is maybe just a coordination issue. But there's a specific note that says, uh, uh, gravel at carport. Um, it actually details some of the cedar, cedar cap horizontal boards between, but that's actually separating left and right, not, uh, side to side. So, um, I think that's where it came from. For, it, it's interesting, actually, unless there's a, uh, uh, pervasive surface issue or, you know, a, a green space issue. I'm surprised it's not a concrete slab because it might be better as a, for the cars themselves. But, uh, I, I'm not too sure how close you are on the, uh, final numbers, Mr. DeAndrea, but if that could be, be asphalt or, uh, could be, uh, part of the slab or something, it'd be great.
Right, if I may, we have, uh, we have included a roof on the carport, so, you know, we have coverage all taken care of in the analysis of the drainage. So we're conservative in that regard, but.
Great, so it could be, it can be.
Just a survey, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs., if, Mrs. Semenoch, do you have any further questions at this time?
Yes, I was wondering if they could submit a revised landscape plan that shows the proposed structure?
Yep. That's a, okay. They would have to do that since we've been talking about the screening.
And, and also, so where would we put the snow?
The idea is that they're going to keep the snow off of your property. That's what Mr. DeAndrea is saying.
No, the, the snow that falls on their five-foot by 200-foot part of the driveway.
Is it interesting, may I comment?
Yes, of course, Mr. DeAndrea.
It's an interesting concept. Um, while we don't use the driveway and we certainly don't produce the snow, we're being asked to plow the driveway for the neighbor. That's interesting.
I'm not asking you to plow it. I'm asking you where we put it. Where do I put it?
Where do we put your snow?
Okay, can you guys not answer her? We've just had this discussion with Katie where she asked, okay, so the question right now is someone is plowing the entire driveway, Mrs. Semenoch. You would, when they, so here's the thing you need to work out with them that we aren't really party to. Right now, they have, they own the land and they have a right to use it. They are going to cede to you the entire driveway use. So it wouldn't be, so the entire use of it would be would go to you. That is something you have to resolve with the attorneys when they abandon their right to it. That's not something we would do. Um, all we can do is keep snow from the new, is do our best to keep snow from the structures going on to the driveway that only. going on to the driveway that only you use. That we can do because we're in control of the structures. But this change in the easement, and this change in who uses the driveway, um, and Victoria's thinking, so I'm hoping she's gonna say something to help me out here.
Uh, I am, actually, I think actually this comes down to, uh, working out between counsel and the two property owners.
Sense as well, and that's why I thought Victoria was gonna jump in.
Common driveway that's not a common driveway.
Exactly.
Right, but it comes down, comes down, they're actually going to rewrite the agreement on the use of the driveway.
Exactly.
I think at the same time, that same document, I'm sure Mr. Bristol's probably anticipated this already, uh, is actually the maintenance of the driveway as well. Because as we know, we're seeing this actually, you know, half of the driveway is on one piece of property, one half is on the other. So that's a very, although not complicated, it's, it's gonna have to be detailed as to who's responsible for what.
Okay, so exactly what, what I had just said, Nick also just said.
But it's up to the attorneys, not us, and I should just move on.
As I said, Mr. McRide, that was exactly my point. And so that we can only help you to the extent that the new structure impacts you. That change in the use of the driveway is up to you how it gets handled. Between you, between you and your attorney, we have no control over that. When they come back to us, they are going to have a piece of land on which they have given you exclusive use. That is your decision, not ours. Does that make sense to you? That's what all three of us are trying to tell you.
No, I understand what you're trying to.
I mean, I'm saying Victoria is telling you to tell you that because she's nodding as, as Nick and I are, as Mr. McRide and I are talking. But that's the, that's where it is. So I, it has to be, now, I don't think you can.
I don't think you just buy this, buy this strip of land and have the whole driveway for yourself.
Because they need it for the setbacks. They don't meet the setbacks unless, unless they own the driveway. I don't like the arrangement, Victoria, at all as a result, but it's, they're prerogative.
Well, yeah, the issue is that the driveway can't go away and, and so the land is still owned by the applicant. And therefore, they have the right to put their snow there. The issue that is being raised by the neighbor and it's a, it's, it's a valid concern is, well, what, who's maintaining that snow if no one's driving down that street?
So Patrick, let me just correct, yeah, but it isn't in fact, snow, this is not snow from ninety-nine, um, ninety-seven and ninety-nine, it's snow that goes onto a piece of land that, for which the entire use would be by ninety-three. So the attorneys, I'm sorry, Mrs. Semenek.
I'm, I'm saying the same thing you're saying.
Yeah, so Mrs. Semenek, this is gonna be lawyer to lawyer, and it's up to you how, how you wanna do this. But this isn't our, we can't intervene on this legally.
It's not a zoning issue.
Exactly.
Well, I, can I just say one thing to that?
Of course, yes.
If you, it, it is, it, you're creating this problem for us. Because if you didn't give them the other driveway, then we would move along sharing a driveway with a new house, which is what we had anticipated doing.
But they have a legal right to propose to do a shared driveway of their own between ninety-seven and ninety-nine. I'm not gifting them something, I'm giving them what the law entitles them to do. I'm agreeing to, the law entitles them to this. It's a, it's a right they have as property owners.
Understood. But I have a right to their, you know, our deed says that they will maintain their property.
Again, we can't intervene in that, legally, we can't intervene. I know it's frustrating and I'm sorry because I'd love to intervene, um, but I can't. And because it's not as, Patrick said it perfectly, it's not a zoning issue. We'll do everything that's within the zoning powers to help a neighbor. But this isn't within our powers and this has to, you have to deal with this legal language on your own. And I'm sorry, but there it is.
I'm sorry, and just to put another point on that is that the driveway issue is not settled. So it could come back to that scenario or another alternative could be proposed, but that, that data has not yet been provided. So the driveway is not a settled matter right now, it's still in progress. Is there any more points that we could, uh, address or at least get on the record right now? Nope.
Um, does anybody, Mrs. Semenek? Um, sorry, I'm gonna have to talk over the barking dogs, my apologies. Um, Mrs. Semenek, do you have anything else to say at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, we're not gonna close this, there's a lot of issues that have to be addressed. Um, one of the questions is whether they can meet the sightline requirements on their proposed driveway. Another question is whether deep, the Department of Public Works will be comfortable in the end with their resolution. They have to resolve the issue with you before the Department of Public Works will let them have this new proposed driveway because it doesn't meet the Department of Public Works standards. So you have some ability to have a dialogue with this property owner.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm sorry that we can't help you more because we do like to be of more assistance. Does anybody on the commission have any more questions on this?
Did we, uh, did we want them to, uh, go to A R C with the landscape plan or anything like that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
It's a two-family, I goofed that yesterday. Uh, but we do want an updated landscape plan. Um, we would like you to, besides working the D P W issues, issues to just make sure everything from plan to plan is consistent. Um, you're gonna remove the decks, um, you're gonna figure out how you're gonna do this legal lan, language. Um, D P W is asking you for the other easements. Um, we've said, you're, um, you're gonna look at how you're gonna screen the carport. We now have confirmed that you're gonna have the knee wall anyway. And, and the.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm done, I'm almost done, I had one more thing.
Don't forget to, to specify where the refuse container will be.
Okay.
At some point in the future.
Perfect. I've got it, location, okay. So those are your issues, Mr. Bristol. Um. You, um, I can think of solutions, but you wouldn't like them, so I'm gonna let you solve it.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I was just, you know who wouldn't like?
So, yo, I mean, you know, Mr. DeAndrea is, um, he's, he's gone. Oh, there he is, there you are, Mr. DeAndrea.
I'm still here, I was jotting down notes so I don't forget a word that was said.
Okay, that's great, but I dotted it too, so you know, I'll bother you afterwards.
Funny as it is, difficult.
Appreciate that.
The, the carport area, did we mention that with, now that Mr. DeAndrea is, uh, on the call here? That, that, that area we're talking about before with the discrepancy between, you know, it's, it's, uh, between a foot and, uh, you know, six inches.
Yeah, yeah, we, we had to that, uh, we talked about actually, one plan does not show a knee wall, although Mr. DeAndrea said that there would be one, uh, that's probably gonna act as a retaining wall for that grade difference between the one twelve and the one thirteen.
Exactly.
And at the far end, at the north side, I believe it is, there's, actually is a retaining wall that actually separates the one seventeen and the one sixteen.
Uh, and then also, I think there was a comment that the, the paving material is not consistent from plan to plan. So that we, you know, areas that may be called out on gravel on.
Yeah.
I have noted, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we just said to Mr. DeAndrea, that he's got some inconsistencies from plan to plan. And he needs to make sure that where he's got that grade change, it's clearly highlighted how he's gonna manage the grade, grade change. Because apparently, we were all missing it. And I know, Mr. DeAndrea.
We'll clarify it.
This would make you miss Mr. Maitland, but we got there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
It's funny.
It is funny because Maitland would have already fixed it.
Well, he would have, he, it wouldn't have been any of a conversation, it would have been, this is wrong, that's, you know, this.
You would have caught that.
Yeah.
You would have caught everything with that grade change and, um, it's my bad because I normally only, I have to walk stuff. So, okay, with that, we're gonna leave this application open. Mr. Bristol, you've got your homework to do, and are you on the next step?
I believe there's more hands up in the.
Um, oh, Mr. Semenek, hold on a second, Mr. Semenek, my apologies. Now, Mr. Semenek, we normally only take one person per household or we've been trying.
It's really me on his computer, so.
Oh, hello, Mrs. Semenek, okay, you're allowed.
Thank you. Um, so, um, so was Mr. DeAndrea able to tell us what the, what, the twenty, the twenty-four inches? Like, is that, is that gonna be the one twelve or the one sixteen?
It's gonna be held up, it's gonna be stabilized, and he's gonna have a knee wall there. And, um, where it's law, where it's grass, he's gonna probably slope it and he's gonna better indicate that. I'm back to having two computers.
You're hearing, you're hearing both, oh, maybe Mrs. Semenek has the, her second computer on.
Yeah, maybe, okay, so Mr. DeAndrea's gonna come back and address that. Um, and he's got his, his list of homework.
My other question is the timing of the construction, is, are all four, or I guess two, going to be built at the same time?
Mr. Bristol, would you address that question?
I haven't talked about it, I assume so, only because it's easier to, to work on everything all at once rather than person outside.
So why don't you give us a stage, why don't you give a construction, some sort of quick phasing, phasing?
Give you a description of the phasing.
Yep, so just give us a phasing where you're gonna stockpile, you might as well. And, because you don't have a huge amount of room. And I've been driving down that street, there's been construction there. Mrs. Semenek will nod when she hears me say this, and it's really difficult to get by on East Elm. And not at her location, but, um, we all tend to take East Elm when we are at town hall. And, um, it is very hard during the day to get through with the construction vehicles there. So, um, if you would consider that, Mr. Bristol, as well.
Okay.
Okey dokey.
Uh, Mr. Bristol, you probably could use Mr. DeAndrea's, uh, S and E drawing. Uh, it shows stockpiles for materials and things, so probably just an update to that would be, uh.
With a, with a note describing the phases.
Yes.
Yeah, and also, construction vehicle, just comment on where they're gonna be because, um, they really don't fit on East Elm. Okay, oh, Miss, yeah, Ms. Gus, you're in that neighborhood a great deal. Okay, so with that, um, no more hands up and, um, and everybody's okay with leaving this open, I would expect? Um, I see no objection, we will leave this open. And we will move on to our final application for the evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Semenek, we.
Have a good night.
Mrs. Semenek, um, we expect to see you the next time, okay, because we'll have answers, okay?
I'll be technologically more advanced that time.
No, don't worry. Um, by the way, I saw you signed on early this time. That when you come back the next time, we normally, one of us signs on in fifteen minutes before the meeting, we'll make sure you don't have tech issues before you speak, okay?
Okay.
So you're comfortable and everything flows, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, take care, bye bye.
Um, Mr. Bristol, the next application is yours as well?
I believe so.
Okey doke, so our next and final application for the evening is at eleven sixty-two East Putnam Avenue LLC for a final site plan and special permit at that address. Uh, Mr. Bristol, if you would proceed.
Christopher, uh, hi, Christopher Bristol, uh, representing, um, the preparer and applicant. Um, the, the site plan special permit application for you is, uh, to change, uh, about twenty-one hundred square feet of space that was previously approved for retail use, um, in a renovated building in the property, to a restaurant used technically, but it's a coffee shop. Um, practically speaking, uh, twenty-four seats. Um, so, uh, when you do the math, we're actually reducing the parking demand by a couple, by a couple, um, spaces with that conversion. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it, I mean, there's, there's no changes to the storefront, we understand we have to do an A R C for signage. Uh, and that's it, I mean, uh, uh, I understand, uh, uh, I don't think health got back yet, but we were gonna go through that process after, um, hopefully after approval, uh, zoning approval and before zoning permit.
Okay.
But, uh.
Um, okay, um, you know, we're trying to, in that part of town, we really gotta ride people on the, um, on the grease traps, so please, um, we're gonna, we're gonna condition that and we're gonna make sure you do stay on top of it. Because remember, that part of town, we had a problem, okay?
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm used to dealing with these restaurants a lot, so that's usually one of the first thing I advise, you know, new tenants or new clients is be, be very aware of those, uh, uh, health and sewer department, uh, issues.
And what about A R C too?
Other signs.
A R C, we're, yeah, we're gonna go for the signage, the storefront itself is not gonna change. So the, the building is staying the same, but we, we certainly understand we have to go to A R C for signage.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Bristol, just, um, this is a side question, it has nothing to do with our authority. Um, when I was looking at the floor plans, um, it occurred to me that you might be able to find a place to put, uh, a takeout window. Your benefit, not anything to do with zoning, but you might wanna ask your client if they would consider it because it could be quite handy for them one day.
There, there are, they actually already brought it up, I think that the Realtor, um, originally said, no, maybe to simplify it and don't, you know, do away with it, just take it off the plan for now. So I'm actually happy that you brought it up and we'd like to incorporate, at least have the ability to, um, to add that little piece of it, sort of, you know, hopefully after we get approval before we go to zoning permit, a, a very small walk-up service type window, whatever you wanna call it. So as you're suggesting, we'd like to have that, uh, as a condition. Yeah, I'm glad you said that, Mr. Bristol, so it, it would be a pedestrian window, not a pull-up window.
You don't know, a pedestrian window, absolutely a pedestrian window.
I just wanna make sure that that's clear for everybody who's involved.
We do not, we do not allow drive-through, thank you.
Well, you know, you know, the governor's office knows what's going on every day.
No, no, no drive-through. Um, the, um, so it would be a pedestrian window, you, um, you're gonna do the signage and um, there was something else I was gonna ask you and I blinked on it, okay. Um, commissioners, commissioners, do you have any questions on this application?
No.
Okay, um, do I have anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Um, I note that the Riverside Association is here and has their hand up. Uh, Ms. Paldunas, would you kindly go ahead? Uh, you should be able to speak now, oh, we might have both, yep, there you go.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
I am well, thank you.
Um, so ma'am, tell us your comments.
Um, yes, Liz Paldunas, speaking, uh, for the Riverside Association. Uh, delighted that there will be a tenant in this building. And I had heard many, many moons ago that it might be a coffee shop. And I think we have room for that in the community. Um, delighted also that the parking requirements are a little bit less because it fits nicely in and won't tax the site, which would be great. The takeout window, I'm smiling at because I'm thinking that's great foresight. And then the only other thing is, I know that the weather's changing now, but is there an opportunity for, in the meantime, benches out front for people to enjoy coffee outside? Uh, given the pandemic, I guess that might infringe on the other storefronts, but there's nothing there at the moment, so maybe a few benches and some pretty potted plants would make the entire site look, uh, happy and active.
Um, I raised the question of the potted plants yesterday myself and, um, Mr. LaRoe um, didn't feel that the, that the location had space.
I will, I will retract that statement to the point that I think potted plants are not gonna be an issue, but.
Oh, that's what I meant, I meant anything to make it look prettier was how I worded it.
I, I apologize if I poo-pooed that, that was not my intention, I just.
All right.
Moving, moving earth is not something I think that we can really, um.
No.
Right now.
So maybe there would be, well, I guess, Mr. Bristol, that would be your answer, depending on where you're putting the window and how, because it, you're doing the window so you can achieve social distancing. So you would have to think in terms of people not being on the benches too near the window.
If, I guess, well, without having, I can't make any decisions now, obviously, it would be, if, if this, this, could this be a situation we would explore and sort of in a good faith effort try to incorporate that into the final design?
Absolutely.
I would point out that. I would point out that benches don't necessarily have to come to zoning, but it would be great if they looked good and were somewhat compatible with the surrounding building and site. So, um, you know, not a, uh, plastic bench, but not, it doesn't have to be something, um, you know, that's extremely well-designed, you know?
Why don't you just show us what you're, like you said, show us what you're thinking and what you're able to do on your zoning sign-off set? And we can, you know, make sure it's compatible with what we're doing with the green space per the P O C D, et cetera.
That's what we wanted, that's what we wanted.
There's not a lot of room there, but we'll try, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
That's what we were looking for.
And it might be the benches don't fit, but it, but the, you know, you get the point, some sort of, and I know the property owner is, has got a lot of interesting and fun ideas about his other properties. So I, and the point is, he's, he, he always does try to do that kind of thing, so I'm sure he'll have a deal with us.
Yeah, exactly, so we'll have, we'll have a good faith discussion, see if we can do something to keep that, that fun neighborhood vibe going.
So prior to zoning sign-off, you would come in with those, when you come in with that, you would have, you would have some proposals around benches. The takeout window that is for, the pedestrian takeout window. And, um, also the potted plants where possible. And just that you will indicate how you will be consistent with the P O C D, um, goal of the, and the task force, the, the post-road task force, the greenscape task force.
Yes.
Okey dokey.
May I ask one more thing?
Yes, ma'am, you're doing, you're hitting, you're hitting well now, right?
May, may, make sure that we have trash cans outside that are attractive as well, so we don't generate junk.
Um, Mr. Bristol, when are you going to A R C?
I, I, I was focusing on this first, actually, I don't, I don't have a proposed sign on hand yet, I don't have a schematic or anything. It was probably sometime during the building permit process.
All right, so trash cans. The, okay, you've got it, I think that's a great point on, and I know, by the way, Mr. Bristol, that it may seem minor, the request to you from the Riverside Association. But litter is a huge sore point for the Riverside Association and they would like to see businesses make every effort. And that's further up towards the exit is a very significant problem for them.
Is, is, um, without committing to anything, obviously I can't commit to anything, is there any sort of, um, suggestions for consistency with other parts, you know, with, no?
I don't think so.
I didn't know there was a, a sort of theme with other, you know, benches that might be scattered around or trash cans, it sounds silly, but.
The long-term plan that we have for everybody is now that we've done the greenscape for the post-road, is to eventually do all the street furniture. And have a consistent plan for street furniture, but we haven't gotten there.
I, I wasn't sure if there was other, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if there's other things that you saw on other projects perhaps that were, that were, oh, I saw a couple of these, I saw a couple of these, but okay, we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Maybe the applicant can reach out to Kate, uh, maybe, um, the Riverside Association can reach out to Katie, but at this point, the commission hasn't formally worked on it. Okey doke.
I would, I would also just point out that I think it's important to have it out there regardless of if they're seating or not. Because, um, food service just tends to attract garbage or, or site waste or whatever the word you want to use, so.
Well, that's the big issue for Riverside is what happens outside the McDonald's.
Correct.
Okay, Madam Peldunas, anything else that you would like to suggest?
Um, no, I think it's terrific and very excited that there will be some retail activity in this environment starting, I'm delighted.
I can also tell you from personal experience that their existing location has extraordinarily good coffee.
I've heard that.
So.
No, that's my Sunday morning go-to.
There you go, so the commission endorses this use because the commission has enjoyed this coffee.
A very committed endorsement.
I believe that's not in the zoning regulations, um, does the commission have any further comment? We don't have anybody left in the public. No? Okay, in that event, is everybody agreeable to closing this application? Please shake your head if you are not. Everybody's nodding, okay, we will close this application. And with that, Mr. McRae, if we could have a motion, now I will try to let you do the whole thing. And don't roll your eyes at me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get through it, but you talked about potted plants and street furniture and that went right over my head because I was looking at the site plan and I'm just wondering.
They may not be able to do it, so just ask where we left it, that's basically what Pat said, Pat said that yesterday.
Let's make a motion and you add it, whatever you want.
No, no, so no, let me just put it to you this way. The applicant has agreed that prior to zoning permit sign-off, they will evaluate the addition of benches, potted plants. And trash cans on-site. Um, and that that will be reviewed by staff. What they propose will be reviewed by staff, if they decide they can't do it, they can't do it and staff will see that. So it's just prior to zoning permit sign-off, they're going to come in with yes or no, maybe, and that'll be that. What they did say that they definitely wanted to go to is a pedestrian takeout. I don't think really it affects our zoning decision and our change of use, but we might as well toss it in there. And the other thing is, of course, our finding on the parking.
Mr. LaRoe, did you get that?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, great, so let's do the. Katie was the one who suggested that prior to zoning permit.
Okay.
Even though I'll be doing.
So eleven sixty-two East Putnam Avenue, five, uh, final site plan special permit. P L P Z twenty twenty-two-two-oh, applicant's requested final site plan special permit to change the use of, uh, twenty-one hundred sixty-two square feet on the first floor on the front building for my retail use. For a restaurant use for a new coffee shop with twenty-four seats in the L B zone. The commission finds that the zoning office has issued a memo dated nine fourteen twenty, stating proposal meets the requirements of the building zone regulations. The sewer division issue comments dated nine sixteen twenty, indicating no comments to be addressed during the P and Z approval phase. The A R C has reviewed and approved a proposed signage program for the site. Parking, the proposed application will improve the non-conforming parking issue on the site by two spaces. Ten point eight for the previous approved use, down to eight for the proposed use for a total of fifty-eight spaces. Therefore, motion to approve the application for final site plan special permit with the following conditions. Uh, what the chairman just said.
No, it has to be actually in the motion, Nick. It has to actually be in the motion, you can't do that. The applicant has agreed that prior to, uh, zoning permit, they will evaluate, uh, the addition of benches, potted plants. And trash cans and will review that with staff.
Okay, there it is. The applicant shall appear before the A R C to verify compliance with approved signage program. It is four nine nineteen, there shall be no change to the approved landscape or lighting design. All previous approvals and conditions outlined in the site decision letters from two thirteen eighteen and ten twenty-three eighteen shall be adhered to. And the applicant shall address, uh, any and all remaining staff or any departmental issues. With that, anything else to add?
No.
Potted plants include landscaping, because you said.
No, they can't do, that we, we pretty much know they don't have enough space to move earth, but if staff sees an opportunity.
Is, is, is addition of potted plants considered landscaping?
No, this would be any approved landscaping that we've done before as, uh, previous site plans. Because actually, the curbs that, the curbs that define the landscape that's been approved are integral with all of the parking, which is deficient.
Okay.
Okay, all right, do I have a second for that motion?
My second.
Goss seconds, um, all in favor, Yesski?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Low?
Aye.
Albin?
Aye.
And with that, the application is approved five-nothing, um, thank you very much, Mr. Bristol. Do we have any other items to discuss tonight? Uh-oh, I can see Patrick's on his phone.
Did you get Mr. McRae's vote?
Aye. No, no potted plants.
Oh, you just don't like potted plants, I couldn't figure out why you were being so ornery about that, you just don't like potted plants?
You have to, you have to look at the site plan. And I think they're going to be hard-pressed to find place.
Yeah.
Sidewalk's only three feet, everything else is a parking space.
Yeah, I got that.
You gotta look at the site plan, okay.
I think we're gonna have to pick between trash cans and potted plants, but that's.
Well, and you got the answer, the answer's, the answer's trash cans, you heard about Ms. Peldunas loud and clear on that.
And we, it will make sure that we can get something that's attractive and not, you know, not a aluminum receptacle or whatever.
Yep, okey doke, so with that, folks, I know you're going to have to make new plans for tonight now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I, I think we're running behind my, what I thought was going to be a finish line.
I'll have to start drinking earlier, I guess with the.
So, and with that, folks, um, good evening to all and we'll see you on Tuesday of next week for a planning session.
At what time?
One P M, I believe.
Think, um, I think it was, yeah, was that it, one, yeah.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening.